All right, good evening. Welcome to the May 6th meeting of the Select Board. Now, everyone please silence your phones and join us for another pleasure.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, top of the list is appointments. We have none if I am correct on that. Correct, see, pick. Public comment? Oh, go ahead.
If I may, may I make a comment on any of your business?
Yeah. Thank you. Public comment. Public comment is open for three minutes per person. And if it's going, first public comment. Going once. Place. All right. Review of minutes for the 22nd.
Were they amended or anything? Oh, that was.
Yeah.
You had a couple of amendments, so did George. Oh, okay.
Mr. Chairman, can we go back to have pages done, please?
Uh, yep, I have no problem with that.
Thank you.
Jealous. He's jealous.
They, um, I don't know if they've.
Start by number.
Yeah.
It's numbered.
Well, two's numbered, three's not, four is, five is.
Why can't I talk to him?
Answer question.
Formating issue. Yep. And all changes were made, the each question provided.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
Seconded.
We'll call though.
Aye, aye. Aye, aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye. Staff reports, administrator's scrutiny.
Actually Connor.
I figured this.
So, actually, I will have a comment. Where the board has offered to continue my employment as administrative advisor. I appreciate that. That will work. Thank you.
Connor. Oh, no, sorry.
I just wanted to let the public know, this is John's last meeting with us as our town administrator, and we wish him the best in his future, although we do hope we can keep you around as the expert of our historical information. And I hope that you get as much relaxation and time with your family as possible.
Thank you very much. I'll try.
All right, so I wanted to provide the board an update. Previously, the board went through the RSA 4114A process to purchase land to build a turnaround on Wildcat Road. Administration was able to reach a deal with the property owner to purchase that land $3,000. We're going through the D.D. process right now and hope to have that turnaround built later this summer. Also, just a reminder that next meeting, the 20th, will be a joint board meeting with the Conservation Commission and Recreation Commission. That will, there'll be a lot of topics to discuss during those joint board meetings or that joint board meeting, including the strategic plan from Recreation. The fir-, uh, it'll actually be the second review of the internal billing policy for the Highway Department, the MOU review for both of them. We're going to discuss a recommendation from the auditor about the Conservation Fund with the Conservation Commission present that evening. And again, if the board, and now would be a good opportunity to introduce that, but if the board has any input or suggestions for the MOUs, now would be a good time so I can share that with the other group.
I would also, while you mentioned the auditor, the auditors are there this week. If you have any comments to the auditor, feel free to make them.
Okay. So if anybody from Recreation, Conservation has any suggestions or concerns with the MOUs, I've asked them the same thing, to have those to meet by the 6th, so I'll share that with everybody if anything comes in, just so you're aware. I want.
The 6th is in today.
The 6th is in today. So it's due to me today, and anything that comes in, I'll make sure to share with them with the intent. I wanted to also provide an update. The board has gone through the 4114A process also to sell land to TurboCam for the construction of a new facility. That project is going to the Planning Board for Design Review on May 21st. Paving on Lorain's Lane and Pond Hill, so as you may or may not be aware, there are certain roads in Stratford that Barrington owns, that Stratford maintains, and likewise, there are certain roads in Barrington that Stratford owns that Barrington maintains. Attached to the report, I have the two agreements, one from 1986 and one from 2012, that basically acknowledges that that's what the towns do and why. So this year, the town of Barrington is paving Pond Hill Road. We're going to pave the 264 feet of Pond Hill Road that's in Stratford, and alternately, Stratford is paving Lorain's Lane and will pave the 304 feet of Lorain's Lane, which is in Barrington. So I just wanted to make sure the board was aware of that, and the supporting documents are attached to the report. So I wanted to make sure the board was aware that the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services notified the property owners of major Waldrons and the town regarding an alteration of terrain concern and potential wetlands impact. Additionally, on May 11th, the library is hosting a babysitting course. I know that the town received a lot of feedback regarding before and after school care. I think this babysitting certification course is a really nice thing that the library offers and facilitates in order to put certified babysitters out there to help meet the need for before and after school care. So I want to make sure that both the board and the community was aware of that. There's a couple of openings on local advisory committees that the groups want to make sure the board and community was aware of. As John previously mentioned, the board offered and administrative scrutiny accepted a pertinent position as an administrative advisor, so that'll start after his retirement as town administrator on May 17th. The next item, so paving schedule. This topic has, there's some new information that came available today, which I've shared with the board, and we can discuss as the board sees fit with expected decision tonight. So the paving started on Second Crown Point. Two Boys and Kane has been out inspecting the work. I've included one of the field reports with the materials I provided today. They've been happy with the work that's been being done. Next, R&amp;D moved to Lock Hill Lane where they encountered problems with the base. So that's the bulk of the information, additional information I provided today. So the moisture that they encountered and the quality of the base required additional work from the engineer to guide the town and how to proceed before investing in the pavement on that road. So you have, that I printed off a copy and gave you today, a memo from our engineer offering four separate options with how to move forward on Lock Hill Lane with a cost ranging from a quarter of a million dollars to zero dollars. So that'll be something that I would anticipate the board would decide on at the next meeting, and certainly if anybody wants to have a conversation about that now, or ask questions or in search of additional information, feel free to let me know.
Does anybody have anything they'd like to discuss on it? As I said, I haven't reviewed it, but you have some data here. Dan?
I looked at it, and I looked over the estimates, and said, number three, padding six inches, 35 grand. If we go with the bid, the additional six inches of stone, 24 feet wide, add them over 36 grand. Um, and then we give a 12-inch base, and that wouldn't, we'd get 20-plus years, and we'd talk about it, and might get 30. Because I went out there, looked at it, some ditches, some culvert repairs, some sinkholes. But I think this would be a good example, fix the problems, show how this works. It's a mechanical theory, it's from 1870. I didn't invent it, and it's very, all engineers refer to it.
You're suggesting doing both the 36,000 of stone and the 35,000 of gravel?
No.
Just, just.
Number three, they come up.
Just the stone?
Yeah.
You're suggesting a different option than the engineer for just six inches of stone, is that what you're saying?
No, I think he's just saying.
We already quoted. And there's no padding six inches of stone?
He's just saying, as he read the numbers, he came up with $36,000 to their $35,000.
Oh, okay. So it's a good number.
For 12 inches, not six inches, is what I'm understanding.
Right, we take six inches of stone, and we make 12 inches. And we already did that in the stone.
But how do you get 12 inches without adding six inches of gravel?
You take the reclaimed and blend it with the stone, and that's the mechanical theory.
You're saying you take the six inches that you're padding of stone and mix it with the base?
Yes.
Okay.
And we're quoting that.
One of the concerns that the engineer had, they did dig some test pits out there, one of the concerns that they had was the amount of gravel on the base. And so the problem with doing nothing, as it was offered in the memo, is in 10 years, when you go to grind that road again, you don't have, you still don't have a lot of gravel to work with. So the benefit, as the engineer explained it, to adding the six inches of gravel would be so you have something, a good base for the road this year, and then in, you know, 15 years or 20 years, if you get that life out of the road, you have good gravel. If you'd like, I can ask R&amp;D and have prepared for the next meeting a quote from them with their alternate price to do what you're asking.
They're, they're quoting that.
Well, I believe what we need to do is to ask the engineer what they think about putting six inches of stone on there instead of six inches of gravel.
You'll have a 12-inch base, add in straight stone.
You're adding six inches of stone instead of six inches of gravel that they recommended. Before you proceed, I think you need to ask the engineer whether or not they agree that that's a good recommendation.
And.
The second thing I think you should also ask is if you're really concerned, you could consider asking what would it, would they recommend fabric with six inches of gravel, which would keep the vines from migrating out? But to me, I would not want to proceed with the mechanical theory without asking our engineer what they thought of it.
The data was already provided to us through the bid process.
Just the price? Yeah, we got the price, but now we should ask whether the engineers recommend doing it.
Well, two, engineers went over there and stuff, and therefore, I don't see anything about the sinkhole, the culvert and stuff, they missed that. And I believe if the ditch work was done over there, the water would be leaching out into the ditches. That's how a road's supposed to work, go out through the shoulders and stuff, over the ear, mother natures, the organics breaking down, clogs up the ground. So I think ditch needs to come over there, fix that culvert, and by introducing that 12 inches of gravel, it's not my idea. I didn't invent it. And we're gonna have 12 inches of base, and we'll get a longer life out of it.
So I have a recommendation.
Yes.
Would the board oppose to having Dan call with Connor and talk with the engineers about what Dan's recommending, just to make sure we have continuity in what we're talking about?
As long as the, um, that the town administrator has a perfect conversation, I think it's perfectly fine. I would only be mindful that based on what they've recommended, we're asking to do something different, I would like them to also ask in any way, does this void our, um, our coverage and their development or something?
I'm assuming that that would take place with Rick, who is our acting highway superintendent, and Connor, and is the town administrator, and Dan, who's making a proposal.
Yeah, I mean, everybody agrees with that.
Yeah, I think it's really important that the engineer make. You?
George?
Yes, I took the, I took a walk-through with Rick and the engineer, and they were quite thorough in some of the areas they pointed out. And after it was over with, and he made a statement as to when he was gonna send the letter back, I inquired of them about the center section on the turnabout, the top of the, the top of the road, on the bottom of the road, however you do it, and I had a concern about the puddling of the water that was on the end of it. They said that with the gravel on the road and everything else, that would leak out. So that was the only problem I had, was because there's just so much water coming down from the hill, and then you can see how, when they built those houses, they allowed the water to go behind the houses, then it comes down to a line, fork down the bottom, and leak by the other culvert and so on. Something has to be done to save that road one way or the other, or else we're gonna expend that money. And I think the recommendation to have Dan go with the administrator, that will work out well.
So we'll provide board with that at the May 20th meeting. I would hope that the board would have enough information to make a decision at that meeting, how to move forward, so we don't delay much longer. And so if you do have questions or concerns between now and then, don't hesitate to send them my direction, so we can get the board's question information. And so Dan and I can start working on that this week.
I did notice if you were okay with that. Are you okay with that?
Yes, I appreciate it.
I just wanted to make sure that they change Lock Hill Lane spelling, so the E is included, so that it becomes a full document.
Good suggestion, thank you. Anything else on paving schedule? So I will, as information becomes available, I'll make sure to continue keeping the board informed. My understanding is that R&amp;D will continue doing some work in town until such a point that they have caught up to the preparations that have been done, then they'll leave town and come back to finish the paving projects for the roads that are ready. So I'll keep the board informed.
Can we just make sure that the board has, has noticed, like, before they show up? That way, nobody's surprised.
We might ask if information else is available. Yep, forward regular.
Sorry, I missed that. Go ahead.
And technically, if you catch any state roads, it's a good travel permit. It's free from state.
Okay. Anything else on paving?
So I wanted to let the board know that we're preparing the warrant for tax bills. We anticipate the tax bills to be issued May 13th, so a week from tonight. Interesting information, the town collects about $24 million a year. Right now, for last year and all previous years, there's only $1.1 million of outstanding tax revenue to be collected, which is a large number. We work on that every day, but the, given the volume of taxes we collect, that was interesting information.
So about 5% goes uncollected, or is total right now is uncollected?
So that's in total, that includes all taxes and interest for previous years here. So the interest accumulates significantly.
Yeah, yes.
As goes to.
Credit card rate. George?
Do we, do we anticipate any issuance of liens up in the future on this?
So the lien date is on June 17th, and that's for taxes, property taxes that are past due from 2018. So the tax collector, I believe Susan Suzanne, do you know the impending lien letters?
Sure.
So within the next couple of weeks, the tax collector's occurs, he sends out an impending lien letter to anybody who owes taxes from 2018, letting them know that those taxes are up for lien, and the lien date is June 17th. So at that point, property taxes due from 2018 will start accumulating interest.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I'll keep the board informed.
More interest.
More interest, sorry. Thank you.
Anything else we want to know?
All right. Okay, next, I am in the Town Hall Building Committee, so we're still accepting appointment requests from the community for slot on the Building Committee, and I again attach the copy of the appointment request form for any board member that would like to share that with the community members interested in participating in that.
Last I'd heard, we had received one.
We have received two. Ooh! Requests to join the Building Committee, so I would say for the board to have to pool to choose from, a few more would be nice. George?
I would like the chair to consider having another appointment for the board member in the event that the assigned individual can't make it to the meeting, at least the author will be able to go, and if that's the case, I would like to be the author.
I have no objection to that. Does anyone else on the board?
I'd make that motion if there's one required.
I appreciate that.
I'll second it.
Very good.
Thank you.
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye.
Thank you, Eric. Appreciate, Mr. Chairman.
Who seconded that? May?
Just to touch back on paving for a minute, I just received word that, hot off the press, hot off the press, that R&amp;D provided an update today, that their schedule is tomorrow, they'll be on Fogarty Winter Green, they'll be fine grating Quaker in the morning and paving in the afternoon, and on Wednesday, they'll be on Pond Hill. Weather permitting. That's the good words. Moving on, dog licenses, so the deadline to register your dogs is April 30th. Anybody who hasn't, do that as soon as possible to, will keep the police department from tracking you now.
And if your dog passed away this year, help down for it.
Unfortunately, you do still have to, the vets do not notify the town clerk of a dog's passing, so it is the owner's responsibility. So good reminder. Thank you, Tracy. I mentioned a few pieces of information where Barrington was in the news, just for your information. Additionally, it says April, but it's May, the work anniversary is for this month, so some as high as 19 years. I will point out that Wendy Rowe, the Assistant Library Director, the Children's Librarian, has been in Barrington for 15 years this month, so if you see her, certainly congratulate her on that. And I too would like to thank John. This is John's last Select Board meeting as town administrator, so obviously, I've only been here since August, but I feel like I've been a significant recipient of John's goodwill and mentorship, so thank you very much. I know I have big shoes to fill, but I'll do my best, and I'll be glad to have you always, so I appreciate it. And I have a non-public request for personnel and reputation when that time comes.
All righty. So new town business, sale of town property. Wait a minute. Am I jumping ahead? Yes, I'm jumping ahead, sorry. I didn't even, I didn't know Suzanne would do. Suzanne, sorry.
Let's see. There's a proclamation from the town clerk for the 50th anniversary of municipal clerks week, May 5th through the 11th. I have an intent to cut to be signed, a property tax warrant to be signed, payroll manifested April 28th, and vendor manifested May 1st.
Can you post with the auditor agreement?
Okay. And I have the auditor.
You have to see it, all right? Just did a poll.
That's it. Dan?
Oh, you have a non-public on land too?
If you have reason to request a non-public for land, there's nothing I'm specific to work.
All right. Moving on from staff reports to old business, the Eisenhower River Protection signs we discussed two weeks ago. Connor sent out some information on the signs and what the locations, potentially, would look, be, what the locations would be and what the signs would look like for conversation.
I just read through the document, and it says something about a committee group paying for, local advisory committees paying for the cost of the installation. Are we waiving that, or are we doing?
It's a good question. We haven't talked about that one yet.
Yeah, so I.
It comes later in the meeting.
I believe that means it's supplying the sign.
Nope, it actually says for the installation. Yeah, it's part of that. So I personally like when our rivers are quabled, and so I would certainly propose that the Select Board allow waiving the installation cost for the way to repair which is.
Are we having the Highway Department install?
I assume that.
Thank you. Hardwood, Tracy?
I think if the, the actual signs are actually supplied by that advisory group, let me just read this, yeah, cost of production, the approval of it, but the actual installation would probably be done internally.
Dan?
It came with Conservation, I mean, there is a, and I suggested that we keep it away, instructions of the old one happening on, three, some days, I'll do it, and they already assumed that Highway Department will do it. Very volatile.
And I will note to Dan's point, the group is aware that the bridge will be rebuilt in the next three years, and their feedback was, they thought it'd be a valuable reminder that it's a protected river during those activities.
No, but two, but I don't, if we install them, we should have it right next to the bridge when they're gonna be working. We'll have to move it again. We just go out a little bit, outside of it?
You're still gonna take them down. Wherever it is near the bridge.
I guess I just look at, like, what is the intent, or how are we intending to install them, because it's a stone bridge. I'm.
It's iron and metal, that's what the other signs, like the lamper and places like that.
They're all.
I know, but on the, on the, um, guy, right?
No, they're driven in prior to.
That's something like, are we gonna drive a rod for them? Is that the plan on each side?
That's what I'm saying, we just go outside 50 feet away, put a new sign up.
George?
50 feet away is the building construction area.
Yeah. George?
And put a breakaway device in there where they're, when they're poured, so we'll go that way. And all they do is bolt to it, then when somebody knocks it over, just take it out there, put another one up.
We don't do that. Not, yeah, not, not for that. Typically, you would put it outside of the bridge. Um.
I'd just like the board to approve that they can.
Yep.
At no cost, they have.
No installation.
And no installation cost.
Does the board agree with that consensus?
Does that mean we, that they pay for the hardware?
Yes, I would assume that they pay for the hardware.
The sign post, the secondary sign, the primary sign is what's estimated in this, and then recover the 2 cents of signs at the cost of $160.
Yep. Okay. Consensus, I'll go with it.
Okay. Everyone in agreement? Connor, do you have anything to add to that?
No, thank you.
All right. Moving along, excavator discussion. Rick, would you like to get up and talk about the excavator?
So we'd like to add, as Rick comes up to the podium, one piece of additional information that came in today. We did receive a quote from the company we're renting the equipment from now, so you'll notice it was a blank on the information that was provided to you for Norrax and for the lease to purchase. So they dropped off the quote, and to purchase the equipment we're currently renting is $116,000.
Anything?
Nope, 263. 116263. And there is also an option that 80% of the rent for that equipment can be applied toward the purchase. So that's new information I wanted to provide, and the new information that you have this week that you didn't have last week is the report on what the quotes for subcontracting the work and the quotes for purchasing the work, or quotes for purchasing the equipment, excuse me. And the last thing that you have new this week, this meeting, is the excavator project list for the short term and carrying out through the summer season.
Rick? What's yours?
So looking, looking at the information, I'm of the opinion that it, again, that it makes sense that we continue to rent the excavator on a month-to-month basis. I think at the end of the day, looking at the numbers, I see the two options that leaves the town is either to purchase the machine outright or to rent the equipment and use it as needed. And in light of the fact that there's a whole lot of balls in the air, and the fact that you're gonna, eventually gonna hire a real world agent, and that's not a, that's a reflection against myself, I'm not a real world agent, but you'll hire somebody that's a whole lot smarter than I am to do this job, they may, or they may have other ideas on, on the kind of recommendations they make to you. So I, I see this information primarily at this point to be used for, for you folks to look at. I would strongly recommend that you allow the Highway Department to continue to use the excavator, rent the excavator on a month-to-month basis, and that the road, the Highway Department, when they put a budget together, will work closely with you folks to see what is in the best interest of the town, whether you should try to come up with a purchase agreement, to own one, to identify your jobs next year and hire somebody, hire a company you're committed to work for us, or with us, I should say, or to continue to rent. But that's where I feel we are. when they put a budget together, will work closely with you folks to see what is in the best interest of the town, whether you should try to come up with a purchase agreement to own one, to identify your jobs next year and hire somebody, hire a company you're committed to work for us, or with us, I should say, or to continue to rent. But that's where I feel we ought to be right now. I think looking at the road list, there is a fair amount of work to do. I'm comfortable that the guys have been using the equipment. It hasn't been setting. They have been using it as needed. I fully expect that they'll continue to operate in that vein. They're, they're operating a little shorthanded right now, but they're, they're getting done what they need to do. They had to pull off one job and head up into, we had an issue with, as you see with Lockhill Lane, that took one of the guys out for a while to work with the engineer on trying to determine what's going on and what type of a course of action you folks will decide to do. But other than that, even taking Jim out of the excavator, Brian stayed in it. I believe they got, I saw the excavator this afternoon down the end of Pond Hill and Second Crown Point, so I believe they will probably be ready to pick that up tomorrow morning and move on to back over to Edgewater. My, that's my recommendation would be to continue down the path, wasn't well thought.
Dan?
The temp tally, but we have an Itachi 75. It's the same thing. An Itachi, oh, they have the same machine. It's the only one that sees. It's confused. It's printed on the area. And I agree with the intern, RHP, the guy wearing the hat.
Sorry.
You heard that.
No, I agree with his, what he says and stuff, is look at it, just go and get down the road lists and stuff, and then evaluate the long-term later.
And I think that you guys have had this discussion before, and I don't, I don't think it's a, I don't, I think it's a tough discussion to have here in five minutes, because I think there's pros and cons as to whether it makes sense to own the equipment yourself and have it set for a number of months, or, you know, so again, I think this, I asked Aaron to, just to get a couple of, three prices on the different things for you folks, just so that you would have a snapshot of what you were looking for, and if there's a, if there is a particular direction that you folks decide that you want more information on, then we certainly can trace some more stuff down with it.
Tracy?
What is the life expectancy of the new excavator?
Dan?
I have no reason to believe that you wouldn't get 15 or 20 years out of it for any amount of work. Is that correct? And then publicly, it's a little better for you.
Yeah, but the only problem is it's sitting. It's not good for it.
Okay.
And you keep it wet, you know.
You can sit inside and stay dry, and it'll-
Seals still go. I replace them all the time.
Okay. And then, and then my other question is, if we were to purchase it, would we be financing it at like a 0% financing rate, or would we be financing it at 5%? Because as it stands right now, dollar for dollar, if you were to, to own it, you'd be saving about 20%, even, even if it sat, other than the three months out of the year, even if it sat, it is still 20% cheaper to own it.
So the answer, John can answer that better for you as far as how the financing would work and where there's money.
It would probably want to come out of the capital reserve account that we put aside. If you finance it, you'd have to have an appropriation clause similar to what we did with the mower that we're still paying for. And given the, the interest rate that you would get on something like this, which is 4% to 5%, that cost, I think we're better off paying far upfront rather than funding.
And I can tell you the last, I just recently, this past year, purchased a piece of equipment. They were 0%. So you might end up getting a very similar.
If it's John Deere, it's usually under 72 months unless this is commercial. And it's different, or is that all?
Different.
Okay. So-
So I think that, I think that further strengthens waiting until a new road agent comes in, because while I don't disagree with the numbers you're saying, that, that piece of equipment may not be a high priority for the road agent. If we're going to take it out of the capital reserve fund, he or she may feel it's a, it's better not to invest in that to save the money for a dump truck or another piece of equipment.
Okay. And just for my own clarity, I was looking at the project list. On the paving list, there's some replacements, replacement of culverts and ditching. Is that work to be done, or is that work that was completed last year going into this year?
I think everything that's on the list is work that's scheduled for you folks.
On paving, it just says paving. It runs down Pond Hill, Quaker, Edgewater, Woodheneen.
They still, so they left, as one, like, they were kind of ahead of the, the paving crew. So they did, you know, Pond Hill, they did a culprit up there, I think, at one. And now they left Edgewater. They're going back to Edgewater and Woodheneen. They have a couple more to do, and then they have a handful to do on South Side, which is, except they're, well, not split the stone, but, and, and stuff like that.
So work to be done?
It's to, to be done, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Any, any other comments, questions, anything?
So we're basically going to, this part of the budget process is what I understand. I'll circle back to this later in the year.
Great. Thank you very much for all the unit measures. Connor, anything you'd like to add?
No, thank you.
So if I may, you guys approved last meeting, like, correct me if I'm wrong, but you approved for one more month. Is there a chance that you would approve just leasing it month-to-month, or else for the summer as needed? Or do you want it to come in every month and ask for a month?
Dan?
I'll, I'll make a recommendation as needed, as you continue it.
Any other comment?
As they keep coming back.
Any other comment from the board?
It was my understanding that we needed it for a full three months, potentially four. Why wouldn't the board just approve up to four months of rentals?
Probably five, I would say.
Well, I, I guess I would say to you then, approve it for four, check the box, and if we need to come back and revisit it for a fifth month, let's do it at that time.
All right, I'm amenable to that.
So I would make a motion to approve four months of rental.
Seconded by George.
Your eye.
Hatchet. Heard about five?
Yeah, five. Thank you. Moving on from pavings, or excavators, job description reviews.
So the new information here will start with the office administrator, as the board discussed at the last meeting. The information requested that was provided details the schedules for the personnel that worked in the town hall. And again, these are planned schedules for some of these positions. It is subject to change, but these are the regularly scheduled hours for the positions as it is now. And I will note that the, I tried to indicate which positions typically attend night meetings, which those will generally throw off a regular schedule. And I neglected to add the land use administrative assistant. That's a position that typically attends evening meetings.
I'm assuming we want to go through these one item at a time, one at a time, or first reading?
I, I had made the recommendation the office administrator title be changed to municipal office administrator. I think it more, it more, you don't like that. I think it more accurately reflects the position. And it's my understanding we're just approving the actual job descriptions, nothing to do with schedules, changes, or budgets of this type, correct?
So for this position being a new position, the expectation would be that the board assigned a grade to the position, which I had made the proposal that it be a grade 14. And additionally, the board, with approving this new position description, would approve it as a full-time position or a part-time position, given a certain number of hours. The recommendation, my recommendation is that it be a full-time position, and I'd be happy to speak to that. But I would hope that the board, to be able to advertise for this position, the board would need to approve the job description, the grade for salary advertising, and part-time or full-time.
My secondary comment, just talking about the paperwork that's here. Just a, and this was just a note that caught my attention going through here, is under working conditions and physical demands, there is the line where it says, "The employee is frequently required to use hands to finger, handle the, handle or feel the office equipment and to reach with hands and arms." Can we just remove the word "finger"?
Be happy to make that adjustment.
It was just one of those, I catch it in everyone. It's not a huge thing, it's just... George?
Thank you. I have, I have two items under examples and duties. I don't see anything mentioned for travel. And then on the backside, under have sufficient means to travel to meetings. I think that should be there, or, or the understanding committee would have to provide it in the car, so I would recommend that that be added in there.
So I can add that, so the third point down, on examples and duties responsibilities. Add a note to that.
And I don't know where working conditions. I guess, you said in there have sufficient means to travel to meetings.
Sufficient means.
Yep.
The, if I, if I can go back to Andy's comment on finger, the reason that's in there is you're thinking of fingers.
I understand. I mean, it's under handle or feel, like, feel implies the same. Or even if we could just pick a better way of it.
How about the word execute keyboarding, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Execute keyboarding.
Thank you.
Great. Can we call a municipal office administrator, too?
Yes. I would, I would, I don't have an issue with it as long as no one else did.
So attend select ward meetings and record them. Attend other meetings outside of normal business hours, traveling in employee-owned vehicles necessary. Is that what you're adding?
And we're also, yes, please, and also going to add the other committee. They may have work on that to this list. Land use.
Oh, that was just a comment.
That was just information provided. That's how I'm guiding decision-making.
Does anybody else have any comments?
I want to know currently, if you would please share the support position with the Select Ward is great, like.
14.
Okay. So you're not, okay. So I guess the, the last thing to approve is whether this is a part-time or full-time position.
And how many hours is part-time?
So I, I would, I would ask that you begin the position in a part-time capacity. Establish your own work routine internally, and if you need to come back in three months and request that the position be a full-time position at that time, potentially make a change. Does anyone else have?
I actually agree with that, and my basis on it is if I look, there's three administrative assistant roles currently. And when we look at building a town hall and we talk about configuration and layout, you may have the ability to create some collaboration space there, or at least create some share.
Or layout workspace and operations, so that people can cross-cover.
Exactly.
Mr. Chairman, we, it's going to be a while before we've been in the new building. And right now, we have our administrative assistant fulfilling some of those duties in the window. And then when he moves over very shortly, there won't be anybody there. And because of the limited personnel there, I think we should look at moving full-time and then hire less ones to get to the other building. You know, have that position full, full-time. I don't think that Connor would ask us arbitrarily to go full-time.
I think your other option is cross-frame within the building and install some type of alert device to let someone know that they're not able to access that area of the town hall.
That's, that's going to be awful tough to do, considering that they're on the other side. I don't see how that's going to work, so that's my-
It worked prior to Connor.
Is it, is it just, just you, Connor, that's in that office?
Yeah, so I guess the things, and I'll speak to it, but I might not be best suited to speak to it. So before I started at Barrington, there was three people that sat in that side of the building. So Cheryl Huckins, who was the administrative assistant, worked with assessing. Suzanne, the Select Ward Administrative Assistant, and there was a receptionist. So prior to me arriving, the receptionist's part-time role was combined with the deputy tax collector's part-time role. So that position, that's a position description, which is actually before the board tonight. There was no position description before that previously. There's no further discussion beyond the content of the description. Additionally, when the, Cheryl Huckins retired, that part-time administrative assistant, assessing role was combined with the building administrative assistant role. So building and assessing are a natural fit. A lot of municipalities deal with those offices together. You were talking about the cross-training and shared workspace. That's something that works really well down in the building planning and building, planning, you now assessing offices. Those two administrative assistants work collaboratively very well. So I think that's a good example of that. So prior to any of those changes, there's three individuals that cycled out of that office. So when John retires and uptown administrator, I'll move next door. And that would leave one position that may be on that side for whatever schedule that position would have.
I would add one thing. Cheryl was full-time up until the year before she, she cut back. I was, I wish she retired, but she had been full-time.
Dan?
Town Hall's only open four days a week. Four times eight is 32. You could stagger the hours. Eight to four, nine to five. How's it go five days a week?
Yeah, I, I think if it's part-time, it's going to be somewhere in the low 30s. Right, Dan?
Any other comments?
Yeah, we're forgetting that we still ask that individual to attend other meetings and what have you. So that would go past the four-day schedule. Let's have it, I agree with you, Dan. But it's, we're actually sitting there with those hours. We're still going to pay one way or the other, so.
We can pay them overtime, right?
Well, if they're scheduled for, say, 33, 34 hours, and they work 40, they don't hit overtime, because you don't pay overtime until they exceed 40.
What are the benefits for 32 hours?
32 hours has a single health plan. That's the only difference.
Is paid time off applicable at 24 or 32?
Yes, anything over 19 gets paid time.
As you know, we're having that study taken care of, and that study is going to tell us how we act upon the hours and the pay and everything else we're going through. And right now, we're going to be asking that individual to put the extra time in at night. And it's still, the benefits aren't going to come with it, so we're going to have a tough time finding somebody. Quite a phrase, like you've said before, it's hard to find people that are willing to work those hours and then turn around and ask them to work four hours at night when compensation is not all there. So that's why I'm looking at it that way.
Any other comments?
That's my argument, sir, Mr. Chairman.
I think we can anticipate whether we have someone who's interested in a role with reduced hours. I think oftentimes, as people approach different portions of their life cycle, some people prefer part-time, some people prefer full-time. I don't think we can quite get response that we would be able to find candidates for the position.
So I would make a motion to post it as a part-time position in the interim. And then if we need to revisit it, we revisit it in three months or whenever the board needs appropriate.
I would agree with that. I'll, I'll agree with that.
So you're approving this job description, this whole office administrator, grade 14. The changes that were made about travel and executing on keyboard instead of finger.
Yep.
And that's what's being moved to that position.
Correct. Is there-
Hours? Does hours come with that motion?
No, I don't think you need hours in part-time. I think that, you know, we're going to, it's going to depend upon who we can find, but I really think with night meetings and doing minutes, you've got to be in the low 30s, just as Dan suggested.
So as soon as you get to your 24 hours, you're then losing 20?
20 hours. Twenty hours kicks in our time. You start to run your time any hour after nineteen.
Really?
And, and you kick in some benef, some, some insurance benefits that are relatively low at nineteen, at twenty.
Wow. My answer to that is wow.
I think you made a good point that, that working on this...
Okay. How many hours do you need?
So the biggest difference after twenty hours comes at thirty hours. I wouldn't feel comfortable hiring somebody for more than thirty hours without the board's express permission. As John mentioned, after thirty hours, that position is entitled to a single person's health insurance plan, not a family plan, up to thirty-four hours. So if, I'm not opposed to the option of reviewing this position again in three months, hiring part-time. I would ask the board, allow this position to be thirty to thirty-four hours in that interim time, and we can look at thirty, or in three months, should there be an assessment.
If you go thirty, then, then you've just made a benefit eligible for more, what?
As a single person's plan.
And at thirty, your productive hours will actually be twenty-seven point six, if the person has no other experience with the ten.
Correct.
So...
I'd be grateful.
See, going to thirty may or may not cost you additional benefit cost, because we have hired in the past employees in that thirty to thirty-four range that did not take the health insurance for a single person.
There's no in lieu of benefit for a part-time.
Yeah, there's health insurance.
So thirty hours, grade fourteen, three recommended changes, review in three months.
I would say thirty to thirty-four, so up to thirty-four, not thirty-five, not being a full-time position. You can, listen, thirty-two would work.
Thirty-two. Thirty-two would tag it, because that's what Dan suggested, we should be four eights on the weeks we ended the meetings.
Twenty-four productive hours. So be it.
So if you wanna approve a specific number of hours, that's fine, or I would recommend up to thirty-four. But again, I wouldn't feel comfortable without the board approving more than thirty, scheduling somebody for that.
I'll be honest, I'm still struggling with getting to thirty. I don't know how everybody else feels.
You're, you're losing, you're going from ninety, you're going from, I think I figured it was ninety-six currently, back to something in the area of seventy, if it's thirty. And if it's less than thirty, you're going back into the sixties, so a significant cut in available...
I think the mentorship, the apprenticeship is not something we should be weighing this against.
Ninety-six was before I started.
Okay. So the FTEs that you had in place, you reallocated...
Correct.
To a full-time position. Where is the loss of the other FTE that you're talking about?
We took a thirty-hour position and a deputy tax position, and we took a twenty-plus reception position to combine into an FTE, which actually was more hours than the FTE. We took what had been a full-time position, but had recently become a part-time thirty, in the upper twenties, I think it was twenty-eight or twenty-nine, and combined it with one that was, I can't remember Amanda's hours in, in down there, but it was, again, you're looking at fifty hours or so going to one full-time position.
So you've actually lost a half an FTE, is what you're saying?
Plus, then you have Suzanne's half, half, Suzanne's half FTE, so that's why we thought the two FTEs together would make a full FTE. Two halves to make a full.
Yes.
But if it's in the thirties, we can give, I mean, Connor can give it a try and see how it works, but I, I think if you cut it too, too low a number, you're putting him in a disadvantage, both in who he can hire, as well as the hours that are available if we're...
If we look at adding another MPA and break...
FTE?
No, 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 I'm sorry.
Okay.
And Melissa. Thank you, MPA, and like, I know it's not MPA, another MPA, that's gonna pick up at least twenty hours a week into that role, which is something we, the board has already committed to doing.
And to be very honest with you, I think that it's a really wonderful way to help mentors to, but at the same time, I generally find, I've recently had this experience with human age intern, there's some really brilliant, hard-working young people out there, and you get a lot of work out of, out of interns that are really hoping to learn, so...
I'm comfortable in the part-time position, I just need the board to approve what the seven number...
Okay, I'm gonna, I'll, I'll add to it again, is the, is the, thank you, sorry. Is the unemployment rate, trying to find somebody that's willing to come in, get the conditions that we're trying to put forward to them, so I think that has to be weighed in also on that, so that's why I say with the full-time, because I've gone up there, Connor could be for somewhere, Suzanne wasn't working on a particular day, you said wait for Connor, come back some day. So with Connor leaving, and Suzanne's position, that is twenty-one hours.
Connor's not leaving, we should just be clear about that, I don't want to start rumors.
Connor is, I understand, he's leaving to go across into the other office, that's only gonna leave Suzanne there for twenty-one hours right now, and you're asking the other individual to come in, and so I'm, I'm making my, my, my pitch, so that's it.
Ten.
What was the question?
The welfare.
Eight hours?
Ten, I thought it was ten.
Nine.
Nine?
Three, three.
I thought it was ten.
So if you go thirty on the other one, then you have nine or ten across the bridge on another day?
Dan?
A lot of people prefer not to work the long days, it's actually only forty hours in four days.
We're, we're assuming that there are not people out there that prefer part-time work, and there certainly are at various stages of the life cycle.
Okay, so hours, what would, I've got, was made the motion thirty is the, so up to thirty hours, so a part-time employee for a municipal office administrator, up to thirty hours.
At a grade fourteen.
At a grade fourteen, thank you. Do I have a second?
I'd second that.
Who made the motion, please?
Well, we had a, first of all, there was a motion by Andy for part-time, and revisit in three months for full-time, that was seconded by Dawn. That was never, never a vote was taken.
I'll rescind that motion for my recently amended motion.
And, and Dawn?
Yep.
Dawn rescinded.
Okay.
So what's the first motion?
Yeah, mine's gone down.
Scraped it.
Okay, so you moved it, did you second Tracy?
I did, and, and we will revisit...
In three months.
Three months.
Motion again, please?
So the motion is to hire a part-time municipal office administrator in a grade fourteen, I'm gonna miss the name of this. For, for, yeah, up to thirty hours, and with a, I did, I got it backwards, with a plan to revisit it to verify how it's going in three months.
And just to clarify, I'm assuming the thirty is the regular schedule, and coming to these meetings for minutes isn't, you know, wouldn't necessarily, she could run over some days, come weeks, doesn't mean...
I, I don't have an issue with that, I don't, does anyone else?
I took the minutes and you run over.
I understand, that's why I explained that out.
Now, I.
Eric, I.
Hatch, I.
Bailey, they.
Eric, I.
Okay.
Is that ninety days or calendar days, or ninety working days? What is that, Mr. Chairman?
It's an approximation.
Three months, and I'm quite certain our town administrator...
Three months from the date we hires. Thank you. Sorry.
No, no, I'm good with that one, thank you.
Moving on, or the...
Post on the hiring process.
Highway and transfer station administrative assistant job description.
So this is a job description, which was originally created before anybody had served in this position. The position, many of the positions have changed to meet the needs of both the highway department and the transfer station. This job description update, and so I attached the previous job description. This job description update is to reflect the current status of that position, and there's no additional changes at this time.
Tracy first, then George.
So on the third bullet down, under example of duties, and, I'm sorry, fourth bullet down, under example of duties and responsibilities, I'm just going to request, because I, I think it's repetitive to say direct projects directed by the road agent, that it be changed to oversee established projects executed by contractors as directed by the road agent.
I had a note in there, to be, to be completely honest, this is not something I would even make as an administrative assistant task. It's, when I look at overseeing direct projects and contractors as directed by the road agent, that's not typically something I'm gonna have an AA doing. If we follow the traditional aspect of that role.
I think what, what occurs to me in reference to this, though, is that oftentimes, because you have a road agent who's both in a leadership role, but also executed operationally, that by having staff to oversee an established project, you're able to send someone out and say, "Can you tell us where we're at in this, and make known that, report back to me?" So that's why I thought changing it to oversee established projects executed by contractors as directed by the road agent. It takes away the impeditiveness of two people directing, which didn't make much sense to me. But I certainly see why, when you have a road agent who's both a leader and functional operationally, why this becomes important.
So just my, my only concern around this is, it's great we have a solid person in the role. My concern is, is we are molding the position to the person that we currently have, as opposed to molding it to what the position should be, and then providing that person with what their appropriate job really would be at the level and the caliber we would be expecting of that job.
I think oftentimes, with any position, when people's responsibilities begin to organically morph into very specific essential position functions, that, that becomes what their role is. I don't believe the position is meant to direct contractors, I don't believe that it's actually to oversee the contractors, I think it's to oversee the established projects, and you could change it to, and update and report back to the road agent progress, or something like that, so that it's more of a reporting structure.
George, I made it first.
Yes, you did.
I did. It was George that will come to you, Dan, and then one second. Before we even got going on this.
Just as a reminder for what Tracy is saying, is that we have said that we were going to, when a, when a company comes in and starts evaluating our positions, one of the positions, we're just gonna ask them to take any consideration for it, to work on it. So that was partially why I was saying on that. On the first section we have on here in line two, the next to the last word, supervisory, supervisory shouldn't be part of the administrative's assistant, assistance job down there also...
Where, where is that?
First thing, next to the last word.
Second line, next to the last.
Next to the last word, it says supervisory.
Up under job summary.
Okay, 'cause you've listed supervision exercise, not, okay, go ahead.
And then, and that's why you could have a supervisor.
Okay.
It says none down there, so I have that there. Also, under the fourth section, bullet two, computer proficiency is not listed at all as part of the administrator's job, so I think that's something that needs to be considered on that, taking apart. Over on page two, process review and incoming driveway permitting and compliances, enter into database, track progress, and so that would mean everything that had been done at the main office will now, will be sent back down to the highway garage.
I don't understand that, George, what are you, what are you saying?
It says here, process and review incoming driveway permits for completeness, enter into the database, track progress, and send out to obtain house numbers.
That is done in the highway department.
Yes, but currently, right now, in order to get a, the application, they have to come to the downstairs office in the back to get the application.
They get online.
They get online.
Yes, we have some people that don't have online, so that's what it, that's the current policy right now, is how there'll be an issue out in the other office.
The issues for the highway department, or building?
They, they come down to the building department, and John Huckins' office hands out the building, the driveway permits there.
We give them the application, they get permitted to the highway.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Because when, when I was there last week, a gentleman came in, because I told him to leave the highway department, and he gets his permit, come up there in the office, and he came up there to get his permit when he was there. That's, that's why it pained my attention, and that's why I'm looking at this right here. So that's, that's going to the job description, it's all I'm here for, nothing else.
Okay, Dan was next.
Oh, I'm done.
I'm assuming you...
No, 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 I was, that was just how I was saying it. And then, then the next one, submit legal advertisements, I think that with the town administrators and select board approval, I think something like that should be added to that. And on page two, the two, four, fifth bullet down.
Page two, fifth bullet down, review and verify...
No, that's the fourth.
Submit legal advertisements and public notices to local newspapers and other outlets. What are these bits, yes? Submit approved legal advertisements, you just want to add the word approved?
That, that's fine, too, all with the approval of the town administrator and select board.
The court approved the RFP, and then she sent it to the paper.
Right, submit approved legal advertisements.
However you want to redo that, be fine. And then, in the third from the end, where it says responsible scheduling and registration of training classes, and I think that should be as assigned by the road agent.
Okay.
And then the seasonal duties included, I think that should be taken up.
Why?
Administrator position.
In a small town, a lot of people wear a lot of hats, and this is one hat.
That's one hat, but I think that shouldn't be there because of the aspect of, we're asked here to make our comments, that's my concern.
Well, I think if it's being done at the most, it's partly essential, it's a big question.
Dan? Wait, sorry, Dan, hold on one second. George, are you done, is that all of your...
No, I'm only, I think it's two, sir.
Oh.
And then down under abilities, it's abilities to use a personal computer. I don't understand the reasoning why we have a personal computer at one of our businesses ours, I just the fact that it's a notation four.
PCs are just called PCs.
That's exact, thank you very much. And then, under computer skills, I just think that, under skills, computer skills need to be listed under the skill level, which is the last one on page two.
So you would like proficient mathematical bookkeeping and computer skills?
Yes, ma'am.
May I just, I want to join this first, just for recommendations, so we can finish that online.
Hang on one second. Are there any other items? And then we'll come back to any conversation around that, and like, everyone to get a chance to get it out, and then we'll go through all.
And then I don't know what UNH T2 Road Scholar completion courses are paying, has to do with an administrative position, so if I can get an explanation on that, I'd appreciate it. And Mr. Chairman, that's, that's my last, that's my last piece I sent.
Okay. Now, responses to anything George has brought up that the board has. Tracy?
So, in reference to the very first item he identified, which was line two, the administrative assistant performs essential management support. Instead of supervisory, we could simply say identifying progress and reporting.
Now, that's still, that's still puts you in a supervisory position.
I think identifying progress and reporting to the road agent, that progress is not supervisory, it's just a factual statement.
Right.
And I think that's... And I think that's part of the job function, that the administrative assistant performs essential management support, identifying progress, and reporting out the progress to assist the road agent in accomplishing the mission of the Highway Department.
Don't agree with you, but that's why we're discussing it.
Well, I feel like it's very clear to me that that's a portion of the work that's being performed.
And as the Chair said, we don't want to turn around and use what the personal position now is doing, try to send this up to the future.
And my guess is that identifying progress and reporting that out to the road agent will continue to be part of what happens with the position regardless of who the incumbent is.
And then again, we were discussing the fact that we have the evaluation of our employee, we'll be looking at a, I understand we've got a couple of stops.
We're getting into a tip for tip.
Yes, but I'm still looking at the former position, too, so let's take along these positions away.
Dan? This is, okay, this is first pass through, we're gonna come back to this, so we'll have another shot to look at it as it gets cleaned up. Dan, go ahead.
There's RSAs, and stuff, all road agents and stuff, and there's stuff in the planning, all driveway permits and stuff, so we're gonna look at all of them, so we don't, there's something wrong, it's not a duty that we can't be doing.
So I'm saying, let's talk about all this, get it cleaned up, and then we'll come back to it. Are there any other comments you would like to add on the job description as it's drafted here?
I want to look at some legal stuff.
Okay. You can, as soon as we're done talking to the board, I'll come back and provide you an opportunity to. Commentary I had on it was system maintaining the department's budget, purchasing activities, I know the current person we have does this, again, that was one of those areas, department budgets and purchasing activities, fitting into an AA job description that again, should be re, that's where I come back to, should the job, should we have an appropriate job description for the person doing the work currently, or does it fit in here? My personal take on it is, budgeting and purchasing are not typically within an administrative assistant role. Participating in development, which again, goes right into the next line, participate in development, presentation of the annual budget for the Highway and the Transfer Station, I'm okay with that one, because you're gonna have, it's not uncommon to have an administrative assistant who's helping put all of that together. Under supervision received, I had lined out the entire last sentence, generally establishes own work plan and priorities to complete routine work assignments. That should be guided, we're guiding the work in the direction of the road agent, they shouldn't be establishing their own work. I'd like that we create some flexibility and autonomy there.
That was the sentence that we lined through to go.
That was under supervision received.
Yeah, I know, I'm looking at it.
So, my take is, and I don't know how everyone else feels, it doesn't fit in that job description.
So, I'm of the mindset, then, you might want to change the title of this to Highway and Transfer Station Support Assistant Job Description. If it's not an assistant administrator role, call it what it is, which is a support assistant.
I agree, that's, when I think of administrative assistant, what we're talking about does not align with what this is.
I agree, so let's call it a support assistant.
Thank you, administrative?
Yes.
The next area that I had was prepare annual facilities report, I was just looking for clarity on that, because when I think of a facilities report, I'm thinking about like the whole buildings and.
For the transfer station. A requirement for the transfer station, so the transfer station has a transfer station supervisor, and this position is expected to also be certified in the transfer station and perform those administrative functions for the transfer station, including the annual facilities report, that reports to the state. Okay?
I'm just not familiar with the report, so maybe shame on me for not being familiar with it.
I don't think it would be fair to expect you to understand that. It's just a requirement for transfer stations to be certified and to report.
The other area, I had to assume operational responsibilities of a transfer station, when a tenant is out, again, that kind of comes back to the whole, that doesn't align with an administrative assistant to me, but if we change it to a support assistant, or something of that, term, I'm okay with that. George, you brought up the driveway permits for completeness, enter into database, track progress, and send out to obtain house numbers. I don't know if that's something that is or isn't being done, or how that aligns, and I will ultimately, once we finish just our general discussion, ask for input from Aaron, and if you don't mind, if you folks don't mind, so I'll come back to that one. Page two, page, on page three, because it's desired training and experience, I think they're all niceties or nice to haves, I did have a note under working conditions and physical demands, it says has access to confidential information, which must be kept confidential, as well as responsibility to produce public records as required in the right to know law. The whole access to confidential information, I was looking for some clarity on, because again, I don't, an administrative assistant, I don't see as being something that has access to confidential information in most cases. Bye, Tracy.
So, I went to the UNH T2 Road Scholar courses, which cover environmental safety, liability, personnel development, technical road maintenance and repair. If this person is in fact, an incumbent that's supporting the road agent, I would expect that they would have a few appearances where personal records and private information are being filed, maintained, or updated, whether that's a performance review that's being filed or being distributed, I think indicating that it requires a very specific level of privacy is appropriately, I think based on going back to the UNH T2 Road Scholar completion of courses and training requirement for the position, not requirement, well, it actually, okay, desire, I think that we benefit from an incumbent who has that experience, and I would say to you that should there come a time where you have a road agent that feels that it is no longer necessary, every year, both the incumbent and the supervisor would be reviewing the job description and updating it at that time, bringing it forward if there was thirty-three percent or more in essential position function changes, so I hear the board's hesitation in having it written in a way that certainly places it in a grade category of a supervisor, and I respect that and understand that. I think there's ways that you can certainly both honor the fact that the incumbent is executing the essential position functions, and word these in ways that avoid what I think it is you're trying to avoid, which is to elevate the position beyond what it was expected to be. Am I understanding this correctly?
Well, I'm not trying to avoid elevating the position, I'm just trying to make sure that the position is classified appropriately, or detailed appropriately, and rewarded and or compensated appropriately for what that role actually should be.
I think the most important thing that stands out to me is it is not just an administrative assistant position, it's a support assistant position to the road agent and to the entire department.
George?
Thank you very much. Sorry, one of the other things that come up on there for desired training is the certified flag, that just came through right now, and because, why would we use the administrative assistant as the flag, because I don't think that's, supervisor is, and the other aspect of that is the note of repub, we have those at the main office, that's why I say I think it's just a passing, a little bit more, you know, as a person.
So the other thing I would like to make sure we point out is that, in some way, I want to make sure we review this, because I don't think this job is on par with, from a grading scale with some of the others currently in town.
Well.
Considering we just talked about the administrative position at a grade fourteen, I feel like we're asking.
That has nowhere near the number of essential position functions that this one does.
Now you're picking up one of them down.
Mike?
And, so are there any other board comments, George?
Yes, the only other comment I have is goes on yours, Mr. Chairman, under working conditions, the last sentence, has access to confidential material. And my question would be from the town administrator, Ann Carter, is where is that information kept, all the personnel files, anything else is maintained, at the White House?
Personnel files are at the Town Hall.
And so that would eliminate some of those confidentiality, and if there's any discipline to be done, would, who would be doing the discipline, would it be the road agent, or would it be the town administrator?
This position reports to the road agent.
The discipline.
No, I'm sorry.
The material from the road agent is normally brought to the Town Hall by the administrative assistant, and that material is sometimes confidential information, it can be health insurance forms, it can be stuff related to discipline, it can be stuff related to any number of areas that need to be kept confidential.
Thank you.
So it should be an sealed envelope, taken from one to the other, because that is just the natural way.
Where's the word confidential?
Under, if you go to working conditions and physical demands, it is the last complete sentence, starts on the third line up toward the far right of the side. I would like to let the town administrator talk, and then I will ask Rick and Aaron to provide any comment or feedback they have.
I believe that these, we were given a task of getting this job description to accurately reflect what a person currently does, and I remember that task that we were given, and this as written reflects what is currently being done. Now, if you want to have the AA cut back on the duties and things that she has been doing, you're gonna put Rick in a difficult position, for one thing. But the second point is, there is a reason why these things were being done by Aaron, and I feel that the job description as we originally suggested is important. As far as the legal issue Dan raises, the planning board has delegated it to the Highway Department. As far as some of these others go.
The other state, oh, sorry, it's still John.
I stand by what I just said. But I.
Okay, I'm done. Carter?
I guess the one thing that I'll add is, one of the things that I found difficult, a couple of positions that I've helped craft the position description before since I've been here, has been a title. Like John mentioned earlier, a lot of times, these positions in a small organization are required to wear a lot of hats, and so administrative assistant is a lot of times the part of a title that will end up staying there for lack of something better. I think it's a pretty, a good observation and a good suggestion to change the title to accurately reflect the work being done. I couldn't land on that position title myself, so I appreciate that input, but that is something that I struggle with, so I think support assistant is a nice suggestion to capture the fact that this position is more than what is typically an administrative assistant.
Rick and Aaron, would you like to come up and make any comment or feedback on everything that we've discussed so far?
I'm only going to address the issue of small town, small department, and the fact that I think that the town's fortunate that you have an administrative assistant that has been trained to do the number of tasks that she does. She's been an enormous asset to me. I struggled to get through a lot of this stuff, understand and try to make competent decisions on issues of roads and stuff that, the administrative side has helped to make sure that work's getting done, I'm not struggling with that, but I do, I depend very heavily on Aaron, as well as the rest of the guys over there, that when an issue comes up that I need to make a decision on, that she, in a lot of cases, is able to point me in the right direction of go to the town office and see the administration, or you should see the board about her, or perhaps this is how Dieter would have, would have gathered information to make the decision this way. So I think you guys have a tremendous asset in Aaron, and I think that you should embrace the fact that you've got somebody that can go upstairs, get on the computer, do what she needs to do, and if it starts snowing right now, and we're short of plow drivers, she can shut the computer down, get in the plow truck and drive and plow snow. And I think, again, I think you should embrace that. I think the more things that this position can do, and you folks have said this, you should look at it every year, and, you know, maybe Aaron leaves and you hire somebody that only wants to work in the office, then you have to readjust that, but I think you have somebody that's been well-trained to operate a number of different functions over there, she can operate in a supervisory role, she knows most of what needs to be done, is perfectly capable of assigning tasks that need to get taken care of so that we're getting things done. She's been a tremendous asset to me, and so, again, I just, I kind of was, I'm taken aback a little bit by the fact that you don't want, or the comments made about they shouldn't plow snow, I don't think that's the intention for her job, but I think that the town's fortunate that she can do that. Thank you.
I think, Rick, Mike, just so you, my take on this is honestly not to take away from Aaron, but to boost that up to what accurately.
Yep, no, I appreciate that. As far as the driveway permitting, they can get the permits up to the garage, I'm not sure why somebody was, that information was given out. Street numbers, the actual street numbers is done through the position that is currently held by Suzanne and.
With her help.
Oh, so you guys have been done.
So, do you want me to do a quick rundown of how it goes? So, I don't know how or when it was started, but when I started working with Town Hall, I started taking in driveway permits, yes, building took them in two, but it was brought upstairs to me, because it was just to expedite the process of then handing it in. So I keep a log of what is brought in for a driveway permit, you know, I issue a receipt for a check, and I have to bring over the check to the Town Hall, so it kind of goes, if it's dropped off to me. Sometimes it'll be dropped off at the Town Hall, Suzanne will just take the receipt, leave the driveway permit for me. If it's not like a subdivision, it's a new build, it needs to be sent out to get the house number, so we do that, we send it to Rhonda, to Cartographics, so I mail those out, and then in the process, Jerry or the road agent who's doing the driveway permits will go out, make their recommendations on the driveway permit, and then it comes back to me, I make a copy for our road filing for building, I submit the thing for building, and then I mail out the approved driveway permit, and it's also logged in an Excel spreadsheet that I've been doing. So, that's just how it's always been since I've been there, on how the process goes.
Thank you. Sorry, Rick, you're in a minute, sir.
I just also want to speak real briefly about the issue of confidentiality. One of the strongest assets of an administrative assistant out of town, it's in the highly classified, upon the, anywhere, is someone that has the authority to be confidential, they're gonna hear information from time to time, and it is imperative that that individual has the, has the authority to keep what they're hearing to themselves and not be running around providing information that perhaps is not of their authority to do that, so I strongly suggest that that be left in any job. So I strongly suggest that as you left in any job description for administrative assistant, that confidentiality is a must.
Would it make sense to strike that has access to?
Yeah.
Like, I get that everybody gets confidential information, but...
I would say no, and I'm gonna give you a little bit of an insight. I met with an individual on a piece of property with a, on a project that they were looking at, needing input from me from a fire protection standpoint a couple of years ago. And they inherently asked that this be kept in the strictest of confidence because they didn't know where they were gonna go. And there were a number of reasons why it was best that it didn't get out around town, that somebody proposing to do something on a piece of property, and to this day, nothing has happened on a piece of property. But that, that's kind of my point, is that they clearly, and so it wouldn't be out of the realm of possibility that this same person spoke with the road agent and the administrative assistant may have been right there in the room taking notes or whatever. And the expectation would have been that that individual wouldn't say anything outside that office that he or she heard.
George?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, maybe I'm missing the boat here, but I think that we were asked to make comments on this job description we had in front of us. And I want to make it perfectly clear that I was making comments on the job description. And while you're sitting here, Aaron, I was not making any direct comments or anything else to you. I was just going on what was on this piece of paper. And Mr. Chairman, that's, I want that to be perfectly clear because I'm here in no way to run anybody down or take away from what anybody else does.
Yep. Thank you. Any other comments on this? Dan?
I don't know, I, it's gonna confuse him. For scaling. And grading's up to me.
So...
Basically, if you have a description, if someone does something else, we can't hold it, times change is up. So I don't know, is it my name, what happens now?
I think that circles back to Tracy's comment of if more than 33% of the job changes, then it comes back to what the board would review.
Right.
So could we request that, or is everyone fine with me requesting that this get updated, cleaned up, and then we get a second look at it?
Yeah.
Question?
Yes.
I think so, Mr. Chairman.
So it seemed that there was a conversation about the title, and also there was a brief conversation about the grade and having the position, the responsibilities of the position accurately reflected in the grade. Would the board like on the agenda a final review of the job description and information supporting a re-grading?
Yes, I would request that.
Okay. Any additional questions or additional information? I'll provide an updated copy and information regarding grading.
I put a lot of notes on there.
I appreciate it. I'll get an updated copy out this week, and if anybody from the board feels there's a consensus to make a change that isn't reflected, please just let me know.
Even right along. Just pause everything here for a minute before we do the next one. George, I know you had spoke to some people that were here for veteran's related information. There are very nice individuals sitting here, and I didn't know if you wanted to pass along the other information.
The individuals that were here were talking about the proposed bill that's coming before the House to go for 100% disabled veterans to $4,000. And they were coming down to look to see if they could get the $4,000, as explained by Suzanne earlier. And somebody in the tax office earlier explained it under, it's not long, the only thing they were entitled to was the $2,000 plus the $425 piece on that. And at the same time, they were looking to get the elderly exemption on their taxes. And because of that, when they figured out their assets, their assets were over what the minimum was for their age requirement they had, so they didn't qualify. And they were coming here to bring it up, the $4,000, and I explained to them that it's not here yet. And so I suggested that they come back, which I relayed to Suzanne. And Suzanne relayed to me that they have been here numerous times for the same information. So it was, that we're going to do. So, does that have to do with why you were here?
Oh, I just heard, saw something on the Barrington Connection Facebook page about something talking about tonight. That's my reason I'm here, is to hear what was gonna be said.
Yeah, there was, there was no discussion.
It hasn't been approved by the state yet.
Oh, I know, I know.
So we have no action to take.
That's, I saw that, it's not, it's just in committee now.
The board, the board had previously suggested that later this summer, preparing for the election cycle this coming March, that the board go back and review exemptions and credits. And I put the report together a couple of meetings ago, and I think that would be a good time. So how it works is, the legislature allows certain exemptions and credits, and then those need to be adopted by towns. And subsequently, at times, the legislature will raise the exemptions and credits allowed under state law. And then those changes would also need to be adopted by a town through town meeting vote. Town meeting vote. So at the time that the board reviews exemptions and credits for elderly exemption limits, you know, we talked about the solar exemption, we can plan to have a broad conversation about all exemptions and credits, including the limits for elderly and looking at any disabled or veteran credit that exists that isn't, that the state has approved, but Barrington hasn't adopted. So we will plan to have that conversation.
Also, on that, to be noted of the rest of the board members, that select person Hatakov is very adamant about looking at the elderly exemption and the else that needs to be reviewed. And I think that that's a start for us to get going, so we will help there.
Moving on to this one. All right. The last one here was deputy tax collector revenue clerk job description. The only note that I had on it, and it was more just for understanding, is this is responsible for the sale of record, and record-keeping of Pine Grove Cemetery. And I just had a question mark, isn't that the cemetery trustees?
This is the day-to-day operations of the cemetery, selling lots, keeping track of them, working with the site software now.
Okay, that was my only question. Anybody else? George?
Please. I have on the first page, under supervised, supervision received. I would like to have the fire chief change out to be the cemetery commissioner. Please. That was one ahead on there. And over on page two, again, I'll go with my computer comments on page two, with the knowledge and skills and abilities. We have the computer knowledge, so that should be incorporated somehow rather in that, please.
Operational mode of computer hardware and software is already listed.
Yeah, ability to, so...
And cemetery trustees makes a lot of sense. Yep, I agree.
And then over here again on page three, under working conditions, under the fourth, say, two, for a fourth line, get the personal computer again, so there's, as selectman Hatakov would say, PC, so that's the only other change that I would go with.
Doesn't need to say personal.
Just computers.
Yes.
No, because I was thinking, reading it when I first saw it, I said, why are they bringing their own computer from home to say such? And then when she said that, I was down, I mean, that, hey, wait a minute, I'm gonna run the field some more. I can't tell you another story, that was the only story that came with it.
All right.
Was there any grade reanalysis on this? No?
Not suggested.
So it's just going before the comp RFP, and it will be dealt with then? So we just made a motion, I heard it.
I will make a motion to accept the job description as amended.
And I would second that motion.
Bailey, aye?
Hatch, aye?
Hatakov, aye?
Naff, aye. Please, we get...
Dan had a personal issue.
So...
Personnel?
Yeah, no, personal.
Yes.
I don't know, I'm just waiting for people to lead us through the next section.
Well, we have one more item under old business, and I would actually like to kind of hammer through this one, and then maybe request a five-minute recess for folks to take any necessary bio-brigs or needed items, since we're two hours in, or will be two hours in by time of your... So 2019 select board goals, updated as discussed at the last meeting. Any other commentary or feedback or anything missing, whether anyone sees it? Is everybody okay with it?
I would make a motion to accept it as written.
I will second that motion.
Bailey, aye?
Hatch, aye?
Hatakov, aye?
Naff, aye. I would also like to make a recommendation right now to take a quick five-minute recess to give everyone a chance to regroup, and then we will prep for opening the sale of town-owned property.
Is there objection to allowing Suzanne to start opening the envelopes to prepare for reviewing sealed bids?
I have no objection, does anyone else?
Mr. Paul?
Right, thank you.
All right.
Palmer?
Since they're being open here.
Wasn't that something on Isaac Turner at the beginning of the schedule?
They said there were no appointments, did the Isaac Turner person go?